At this time, I'll call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Certainly, Chair. Commissioner Baker.
Present.
Commissioner Bodak.
Here.
Commissioner Garretson.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski. Commissioner Leon.
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet.
Here.
And Chairman Granados.
Here.
Chairman, let the record reflect, we have eight commissioners present for today's agenda-setting session.
Thank you very much. Clerk of the Board, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly, we ask God to give her peace and love of charity, to get the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of the Board, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you very much. Prior to moving on with tonight's meeting with regret and sympathies, I would like to ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of the two Newark firefighters, Augusto Acabu and Wayne Brooks, who died in the line of duty fighting the Grande Costa de Vorio cargo ship fire in Port Newark. Tonight, we have the honor of having two presentations, and first, I would like to have Commissioner Williams, in a couple minutes, join me as we present a resolution to Melissa Logan, a teacher of Jefferson Elementary School in Plainfield for her outstanding achievement in environmental education for children. Ms. Logan was awarded the Plainfield Garden Club of America's 2023 Elizabeth Abernathy Hull Award, not just a teacher, but as someone who ignites the passion for horticulture and environmental conservation within her third-grade students. So today, we come together to honor Ms. Logan for her commitment to environmental education, is your dedication that has made a lasting impact on the lives of your students and the community as a whole. Your efforts will continue to inspire new generation environmentally conscious students who bring conservation and sustainability into future. I would like to invite Ms. Logan, as well as Kate Fleschler, President of Plainfield Garden Club, to join Commissioner Williams and myself upstairs to do a presentation.
Hi, everyone. So, we're really excited to, you know, that one of our county's finest educators, Melissa Logan, has received this national award from the Garden Club of America. So, I'm gonna read it. Okay. Whereas, the Union County Board of County Commissioners hereby congratulates Melissa Logan, an educator at Jefferson Elementary School in Plainfield, who received the Garden Club of America's 2023 Elizabeth Abernathy Hull Award for Outstanding Achievement in Environmental Education for Children. And whereas, the Garden Club of America, a national organization founded in 1913 with over 18,000 members across the United States, including those of the Plainfield Garden Club, established in 1915, is dedicated to supporting education for America's youth in the fields of horticulture and environmental conservation. The organization annually awards a $1,000 grant through the Hull Fund for Early Environmental Education, recognizing individuals who inspire children under the age of 16 to appreciate our planet's beauty and fragility through horticulture and environmental education. President Kate Fleschler will be representing, and she's here, the Garden Club of Plainfield, along with Brenda Anderson, another Plainfield resident and member of the Garden Club. So also, whereas Melissa Logan has consistently encouraged and nourished all her third-grade students' interest in horticulture and environmental conservation, and for the past nine years has taken the lead in organizing field trips to the Hands to Nature Program at the Reeves Reed Arboretum in Summit, evidencing herself as an exemplary role model and mentor to our local youth within Union County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Union County Board of County Commissioners hereby congratulates Melissa Logan upon receiving the Garden Club of America's 2023 Elizabeth Abernathy Hull Award for Early Environmental Education, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution, suitably prepared, as you see, be presented to Melissa Logan as a sincere token of this board's congratulations and well wishes. And we also have another resolution. It has much of the same language, but we also wanted to thank Kate for bringing this to our attention, and we want to honor the Plainfield Garden Club as well. So I'm gonna hand the mic over for Kate to say a couple of words, and then Melissa say a couple of words, and then we do photos.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. Well, that was an amazing summary, and I just wanted to say that it cannot be stressed enough that it was Ms. Logan's temerity and ingenuity to seek out our organization that has taken care of the Shakespeare Garden. In a mere moments, when she approached us in 2013, she convinced us to fund the Hands to Nature Program for her deserving third graders, and got our club members to serve as volunteers. In the 10 years since that meeting, over 1,000 Plainfield third graders have been loaded onto buses to travel, to learn about the world. We cannot thank Ms. Logan enough for taking us with her on this incredible journey, and our Civic Improvement Committee is thrilled that we were able to honor her with the Garden Club of America's Elizabeth Abernathy Hull Award. Congratulations.
Well, thank you to the Plainfield Garden Club and the County Commissioners for the resolution. I appreciate it. You know, the Plainfield Garden Club has been tending to the Shakespeare Garden in Plainfield for over 100 years, and 100 years ago, Plainfield was a very different place. So, you know, we work with the people who will inherit this, who will inherit all the treasures of Plainfield and Union County, and we are very proud to teach our children that they are stewards. Thank you.
Okay, and now we'll do a few photos.
Oh, sure, absolutely. No, we don't have to sing. It's all good. You're all good. All right, you guys? We're gonna take a few. One, two, three, four, five. Now look here. Great. Thank you very much. And now for tonight's second presentation, which we're all thrilled to be a part of. We'll be presenting certificates to a group of students who have been awarded scholarships for this year's summer theater camp, presented by the Theatrical Artists Prep and the Union County Performing Arts Center. This scholarship program launched through one of my 2023 chairman's initiatives of building a stronger Union County, exemplifies the power of collaboration and commitment to the arts, which will provide an incredible opportunity for these students to develop their skills and shine on stage. A total of 20 scholarships have been awarded to talented students from all over Union County, which covers the costs associated with the camp, ensuring that finances are not a barrier to pursuing their dreams. Taking place at the newly remodeled Hamilton Stage under the guidance of professionals, these students will be performing two productions of the play, Once on This Island Junior. The first production will feature a cast of students of grades 2 through 4, while the second production will showcase talents of students from grades 5 through 9. We would like to thank Deanna Hunt, the Director of UC PAC, and Sam Han Simpson, the owner and artistic director of Theatrical Artists Prep, for their continued guidance and leadership. Their commitment to promoting artist's expression has paved the way for the success of these students. Today, as we present certificates to the scholarship recipients, who represent a promising future for performing arts industry, we commend them for their dedication, hard work, and exceptional talent. On behalf of Union County Commissioner Board, we continue to promote the arts when it comes to our residents and when it comes to our facilities. We wish you all great success this month, and we are looking forward to seeing the performances. I'd also like to acknowledge the Department of Parks and Recreation for taking the lead on this initiative and making sure everything came to fruition. Now, I'd like to call upon Deanna, Sam, to join me as we present scholarship to the recipients. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Deanna Hunt, the Executive Director of the Union County Performing Arts Center. And first, I just want to again thank the Chairman and the Commissioners for this initiative. This is allowing 20 students from around Union County to have the opportunity to participate in a premier summer camp, children's summer camp. I'm also thanking you on behalf of Samantha Simpson, the Director and owner of TAP, Theatrical Artists Prep. Unfortunately, she's not able to be here tonight because her little one has come down with a stomach bug. This program is really impressive, as the Chairman got to see today. In four weeks, they're going to put on an amazing performance of Once on This Island Junior, and it's in two different groups, the younger group and the older group of about 20 students each. And we do hope that all of you will be able to come and see this great performance. It's very lively, lots of music, and lots of dancing. But I also want to say that this has allowed the Union County Performing Arts Center the opportunity to reopen, and I can't think of a more perfect way of reopening the Hamilton Stage than having beautiful, young children coming into the doors every day. As most of you probably know, that the stage was closed on September 3, 2021 due to Hurricane Ida. It has been a long process, and almost two years later that we've just been able to reopen it on July 3. So I appreciate that Samantha and everyone at TAP have had a little bit of patience as we work through some kinks, and the students too, as we reopen, and parents, as we reopen the stage. So we are looking forward to seeing everyone on July 28 and 29. It's a Friday and Saturday. There's two performances each day. So, thank you again.
I just want to say today, I got a sneak peek of these amazing individuals who truly are remarkable, and just kind of seeing how, within two weeks, how coordinated, how amazing, and how, I think we had such excitement with Director Durbin Drake, and looking forward to seeing these performances and seeing how our youth continue to be, you know, so amazing in anything that they set their minds to. So we thank each one of you for participating in this program and making Union County the place it is. So I apologize in advance if I mess up on anyone's name. I ask you that, once you get certificate, to go to your right place, then we'll take a group picture with the County Commissioners. First, certificate recognition, Nyla Rain. He's ready to go. That was it. He was ready to go up there. That's it. Jana Jean Sajost. Anna Rita Lopez. Gabriela Garcia. Dave will coordinate a picture. I'd like to call upon the County Commissioners, and I know that our County Secretary's always been a strong proponent of the arts, so I'd like to invite him up for the picture also, please. to go home if you would like. You can stay here if you want to, but you're more than welcome to if you want to leave. But we appreciate you being here. Thank you very much. Have a great night. Thank you for being here. No, thank you. Thank you very much.
Haven't been there in quite a while, you know? Yeah, since the hurricane.
Sergio.
Oh, sorry.
No, thank you for participating. You guys were seriously so amazing this morning. I was watching you guys behind the scenes. You guys were so good. I can't wait for your performance. You're welcome.
So cute.
Hey, where's school go for?
Do you want to be in it?
Tonight, we have a need to go into executive session. County Council, please make your statement relative to tonight's executive session.
Thank you, Chairman. Pursuant to provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the public body may enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing certain enumerated subjects. This board now wishes to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing confidential discussions concerning shared services agreements and attorney-client privileged communication concerning the matter of HC Equities versus Union County. The minutes of the executive session shall be separated from the minutes of the open public session. The minutes of the executive session, redacted as appropriate and necessary, shall be available in approximately 30 days. The Clerk of the Board shall retain the original minutes until such time as the confidential limitations have been removed, at which time they shall be made available. Upon the affirmative vote of a majority of the members present, the Board may retire to executive session. Upon the Board's return, it may or may not take formal action on the matters discussed. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So move.
Motion is made by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Kimberly Palmieri-Mudet. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak.
Yes.
Commissioner Garretson.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
And Chairman, I'm sorry, Chairman Granados.
Aye. We're not having an executive session. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for the public's information, we anticipate this session probably will take somewhere between 30 and 60 minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak.
Yes.
Commissioner Garretson.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Vice Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
And Commissioner Chairman Granados.
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight commissioners voting the affirmative to return from executive session.
Thank you very much. County Council, Bergen, do you have anything to announce as a result of executive session?
Yes, I do, Chairman. Thank you. As a result of the action taken by the Board in executive session, the currently listed resolution on the agenda for authorizing a lease with SIG Mountain Heights LLC is going to be withdrawn from the agenda. There will be a new resolution added, authorizing the county manager to execute a settlement in the matter of HC Equities LP versus County of Union. The change will be reflected in the agenda for the regular meeting, which will be handed out by the Clerk's office. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll conduct communications during tonight's regular meeting, and now we'll move on to resolutions. Office of Union County Clerk, County Clerk Joanne Rijoppi.
Good evening, Commissioners. The County Clerk has two resolutions for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Commissioner Bell?
Madam Clerk, can you do me a favor, just explain a little bit on both of them, just further, a bit more education on them?
Certainly, yes. As you may know, according to federal and state law, the county clerk does the ballots and the sample ballots, and we have a formula that we have to follow, one for the state, one for the federal government, based on percentage of Spanish-speaking surnames, Spanish surnames, I should say. We have been doing that per town in the past, doing that based on the census population per town. The federal government tells us we should really be doing it by the county as one jurisdiction, not by the towns, which means that right now, we do 10 towns bilingually, we do five partially bilingually, and we do six English-only. So beginning in November, we will do all ballots bilingual, and all our forms will be bilingual. So we want to notify those people, those voters, in the 11 towns that are not bilingual, that they will be bilingual, and that's the purpose of this, just to notify them so they're not surprised. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Thank you very much, County Clerk.
Thank you.
Office of Union County Prosecutor, First Assistant Prosecutor James Tanzi.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman. We have one item on the agenda for tonight. It is an amendment to Resolution 202350, which allocated $150,000, which was from a grant, to be spent with gold-type business for the whole county. It wasn't just for the prosecutor's office, it was a county-wide expenditure. I think about $119,812 has already been spent. We're looking to buy license plate readers. We're looking to use the remainder of the 150. We already received the grant for $355,500 in our Shot Spotter Resolution. So effectively, we just want to increase the amount that we can spend with gold-type business from $150,000 to $514,909, and it's going to be used to purchase license plate readers to be installed throughout the county. License plate readers pick up plates as the cars go by, they aid us in investigations and stolen cars.
I like how First Assistant Prosecutor didn't want Commissioners asking questions, so he really wanted to fully explain the resolutions. There's no questions from us. So now, after all that, does anyone have any questions?
He answered my question.
Answered everything. Thank you very much.
Get it over with.
Office of Union County Sheriff, Sheriff Pete Corvelli.
Chairman, Commissioners, Sheriff's Office has four resolutions on the agenda for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Seeing none, thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
Board of Elections, Administrator Nicole Durato.
Good evening, Chair, Members of the Board. The Election Board has two resolutions on the agenda for your consideration. We'd be very happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. Can you just elaborate on, number one, what we're using the warehouse space for?
So, in, yes, of course, through you, Chair. In 2021, when the governor signed into law early voting, we were responsible for purchasing electronic poll books, which includes, we purchased over 1,000 electronic poll books, which come with their own printers, and we have over 200 Wi-Fi devices for connectivity during early voting and Election Day, and we had nowhere to put them. So we were fortunate to find this space that the landlord renovated to ensure that it was a secure space, and it fit our needs electrically, because we need to be able to charge and test, you know, all this equipment before it goes out for Election Day. So this is an extension of a lease. Initially, it was a two-year lease. It is the extension. It is a five-year extension on that lease, which is paid for by the state with early voting grant funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Mirabella?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Administrator, can you just talk a little bit about number
more interested in if you could give an explanation to number two, or item number two.
Yes, absolutely. Oh, I'm sorry.
Because one, does, well, I'll let, see what your explanation is, and then I'll add.
I think I might know where you're going with this one. At our last meeting, you were kind enough to allow us to put $400,000 in ARPA funds into the rental assistance program. This, we are, in this particular, and in number one, we're adding another $500,000 in, and then number two grants the total of $900,000 to Curry Davis, which is our provider that does the rental assistance program for us. And just to anticipate another question you might have is why are we using ARPA funds here when we had ERAP dollars? We had additional ERAP dollars that were given to the state of New Jersey that will be given back to us, but we have not gotten them yet. So in an effort not to disrupt the program, which has been incredibly successful, the county manager has worked with us to be able to, and you, of course, to provide ARPA funds to fill the gap until we get that MOU in place with the state.
Okay. So are there, are there two different rounds that we're talking about here with Curry Davis or, you know, because it says that to administer the county emergency rental assistance program, round two to include, so is there still round one going on?
No, round one ended in September of 2022.
Okay.
So then the ERAP two started, and so this is just in conjunction with the ERAP two program. ERAP is really a treasury program.
Yeah.
That we had hired Curry Davis to manage for us, and they will, when we get those other monies, continue to do that, but they're doing a tremendous job. They're out in the community. They're meeting people. They're really working hard to keep people in their homes, and we really didn't want to disrupt how well the program's going.
Right, right. Okay. I think that's all questions I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Baker. Anyone else? Thank you, Deputy County Manager.
Thank you.
Department of Engineering, Public Works and Facilities Management, Director Graziano.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. I have eight items on the agenda this evening for your consideration, and I'll answer any, or I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Commissioner Williams?
Could you just give a little bit more background on number four and number five?
Sure.
No, I'm sorry.
Three and four? Four and, five and six?
Yes, five and six. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. The state, every, every two years, does a inspection on all of our bridges over 20 feet within the county, and we get reports back. We get scour critical reports, which are these reports, which are any of our bridges that the foundation has washed away enough that we have to do a scour project. They're not unsafe to drive on, but we have to do a scour project and reinstall some of the foundation, or dig out some more, and do it. In this case, we have two separate contractors that went out to bid, one for a bridge in Plainfield, Randolph Road Bridge in Cedar Park, and another one in Central Avenue and Broadway. So we're all set to get those going. The one in Plainfield, I believe, is starting by the end of the summer, and then the other one should be starting also somewhere around the end of the summer, early fall, on those bridges. And these are both JDOT funded.
And this is separate from that other paving, that other?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Director. Anyone else? Commissioner Leon?
Number four, I see there's a decrease. Can you elaborate?
Yes. So we, we had a project there, we had a, some water damage on those three floors in the courthouse tower. We went out to bid, we had the contractor come in, it just, the amounts and the tallies didn't add up to the end, so we get back our credit. We had a, we had some work that had to be done, that just didn't cost as much as we thought, so we're getting a little money back on it, which is good.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you, Chair.
Department of Finance, Director BB Taylor.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board. The Department of Finance has 11 resolutions for your consideration this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Commissioner Bodak?
Not a question, but I just wanted to congratulate Director Taylor and the other department heads that worked with her with the large amount of grant money that's coming into this county for various programs to help our residents.
Commissioner Bodak? Anyone else? Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you.
Department of Parks and Recreation, Director Victoria Durbin Drake.
Good evening. The Department of Parks and Recreation has three items on the agenda. I'd be happy to attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Commissioner, no. Commissioner Mirabella?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not a question, just a comment about the deer management program that's on the agenda right now.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I know it's new, this area is new to the director, but I do want to highlight and compliment two members of our team who have done an extraordinary job helping manage the deer population in our county, and they're sitting in the back. It's Ray Spahn and Joe Pollockay, and they really have worked hard to come up with a program that's environmentally friendly, safe, and reduces the herd of deer because left unchecked would explode in our county, causing damage, not only to property, but vehicles and Lyme disease and all the rest of the things that are associated with them. So I really want to give those two guys a lot of credit for their creative work and how they've approached the, this particular project, and I appreciate the director's oversight to this point and look forward to working with them on another successful program coming forward. So, thank you, Director.
And if I may, Commissioner, I think it's interesting to note that, you know, I came into this program, this position, this program halfway through, and I've learned a lot from both of these gentlemen, but, you know, I was interested to note that in our deer management program, 211 deer were removed from the population, but over 500 deer carcasses were picked up from the side of the road that had to do with accidents between cars and deer, so I think that highlights the importance of the program.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bella, Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, so 211 plus 500.
Correct.
So we're talking about 700.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes. Could you give a more explanation on your item number one, particularly with the change order and what that's about with Weldon material?
Certainly. So the, the amount that you see there is a drawdown for the Parks Department of $50,000. It's our basic stone that we get from Weldon for various paving that we do and stonework that we do within our parks. That number that you see, the million dollar number, is an overall number that is for the entire county. I think Parks and Rec has spent about $20,000 so far this year.
You said spent how much?
About $20,000 so far this year.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Baker. Just another comment too, just want to thank you, Director Drake, and also Angelica Sodeno from Parks and Recreation for basically making the whole summer theater camp scholarships happen. As we saw the excitement in the youth who are here today, truly goes to, you know, how the county continues to provide theater and the arts and making sure it's attainable for everyone. So I just want to thank both of you for your leadership in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Department of Public Safety, Director Dennis Burke.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Public Safety has one item on the agenda for your consideration. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Director.
Thanks, sir.
Office of the County Council, County Council Bruce Bergen.
Thank you, Chairman. County Council, happy to have a resolution tonight. I'd be happy to take questions from the board.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Seeing none. Thank you very much, County Council.
Thank you.
Office of the County Manager, County Manager Ed Omen.
Thank you, Chairman. I have two items on tonight's agenda. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Seeing none. Thank you very much, County Manager.
Thank you, Chairman.
Move to Commissioner sponsored resolutions. All the Commissioner sponsored resolutions are from the entire board. Are there any comments from my colleagues regarding any of the Commissioner sponsored resolutions? Seeing none. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sounds good. Thank you.